I call this meeting with Tacoma Park City Council in order. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mail. Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Mail had a last-minute obligation at work. He will not be here this evening. Just a quick scheduling update. We have no additional agenda items. Upcoming agendas of interest. Reminder that the city will be closed this Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday. The city council is not meeting next Monday, November 26th, but we will be meeting Monday, December 3rd. That's our last meeting before the holiday recess, and we will be reconvening on January 7th. A reminder that at that meeting on the 3rd, we have a tentative item for a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for an environmental sustainability action plan, and we have work session items for discussing landlord-tenant relations and the redistricting proposal. So just a reminder that those items are coming up. Next, we have a couple of items for the record, and the first one is a presentation of the Local Government Insurance Trust Training Award Grant, and we have a couple guests with us here this evening from the Local Government Insurance Trust, known as Legit. And if you want to say something first from the podium, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and I appreciate you having me here tonight. On behalf of the Board of Trustees and the staff of the Local Government Insurance Trust, I'm pleased to present a training grant to your city tonight. But before I get started, I'd like to do a couple of things. Number one is introduce, and I'm sure most of you, not all, know Scott Hancock. Scott's the executive director of the Maryland Municipal League and sits on the Board of Trustees of Local Government Insurance Trust. Legit was founded in 1987. We are celebrating our 25th year this year, and would it like to invite all of you, if you could, to our annual meeting on December 6th at the Navy-Marine Stadium in Annapolis. We have a couple or three academy classes that day, as well as a great meeting, and think it would be interesting, and it's a free lunch involved, too, so would love to have you. I'm hearing, a little background on Legit, and that we're unique, and that back 25 years ago, MML and MAKO, the Maryland Association of Counties, joined together to create an insurance pool, which was a wonderful idea. Only one other state did it this way, which was the state of Oregon. Other states have municipal association formed a pool, and the county association formed a pool, and they, in some states, they compete with one another. Some states, they ride across the parking lot from one another and operate dual and have a dual administrative cost. The folks here did it right. We started with 21 members back then, and we're up to 179 as of this time, with total assets of about $62.5 million. Tacoma Park participates in the primary liability, the excess liability, property, equipment, crime, and environmental. And several years ago, our board, because we've done so well financially, our board made a decision to create a long-term plan to return capital back to the members, known as Members Equity. And just this year alone, in fact, your manual premium, your gross premium, is in the neighborhood of $137,000. Because of your great experience, you actually only pay $70,000. So you're almost getting a 50% credit off your retail rate for your insurance because of your long-term relationship with Legit and the great experience you've had. I'd like to compliment you on that and recognize you for that. Now, I've been doing this, I've been at Legit three years, and that's the best credit I've seen in doing these presentations. In addition to that, to the grant presentation tonight, you all, over the last five years, your employees, we've trained 144 of your employees in our various classes, and you all are kind enough to host a defensive driving course for us every year. And in fact, your former town manager, Ms. Matthews, is now our newest member of our Board of Trustees, and would like to thank you, and she actually accepted while she was here, so I'd like to thank you for that as well. So getting on to why I'm here, and the most important part, I'll stop talking so much and do what, why I'm here, is I'd like to present a training grant for $4,375 to the town, to the city, rather, for your Recreation Department's grant application for CPR training and AED training. Mr. Gregory Clark, and Debbie Huffman, and Eric Rush, and John Webster are here tonight in recognition of their fine work in applying for this. And the grant is to send Mr. Webster for training to Baltimore with the National Safety Council so he can come back and instruct your workforce on use of AEDs and also CPR. In addition to his training, the grant is for 10 adult mannequins and 10 infant mannequins. And I think it's wonderful training and a wonderful use of a training grant. The Board of Trustees sets aside $80,000 each year for grants, and I think it's great that you've taken advantage of this this year. The last, the prior times, you've gotten this back in 2004 and 2006, so I'm glad that you're getting back on the bandwagon for that, because this is one of the most fun parts of what I do, is present these checks. Would you like me to present it to you or to the Recreation Department?
I think you should present it to the Recreation Department.
Oh, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn around and we'll take the picture.
Love it.
No, no, turn around this way. This way.
Love it.
There we go.
We just want to thank you guys for letting us submit it, and thank you, Legit, for accepting our grant proposal. We decided that we wanted to look to see how we could save some money and how we could best help our staff, which would then in turn help our volunteers, and it would trickle down to the participants that are in our programs. So with this, we're able to save some money, keep it internally, save and train our staff and our volunteers and our volunteer coaches and everything. So, thank you.
Great idea.
Thanks.
Floyd Cross and others come in and do the training, but it's really nice that we're going to be able to do it in-house.
And we're going to get 10 mannequins and 10 babies?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but yeah.
The training that John will go to, I'm already an instructor myself, so we will teach together. The training will cover his materials, and then we'll be able to purchase 10 adult mannequins, 10 infant mannequins, and AED trainers so that we can properly know how to use the AED machine if ever need, and supplies for first aid and CPR, as well as books for the students.
Super.
In addition to training the staff, you will be having classes for community members, too?
Right now, we, the application, we had to say that we were just doing internal staff, so not at this moment. We are looking to do career staff for the Recreation Department, part-time staff, and then roll it out to volunteers.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So, a great idea and a wonderful result.
Thank you, yes, we agree. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
as Small Business Saturday, and I want to read this. Whereas the city of Tacoma Park recognizes the importance of small businesses as the glue that holds communities together, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are currently 28 million small businesses in the U.S., and small businesses created 65% of net new jobs over the past two decades. And whereas advocacy groups and public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, and whereas one of Tacoma Park's virtues is its unique array of locally-owned and operated independent businesses, which are part of the traditions and heritage of the community, local business owners and operators are committed to Tacoma Park, contribute to the local economy, offer quality jobs for city residents, engage in civic concerns, and are essential to our success as a community. And whereas support of these businesses is critical to maintaining a vibrant, compact, and socially, environmentally, and financially sustainable community, and whereas the city values the businesses located in Old Tacoma, the Tacoma-Langley crossroads, Long Branch, and along the New Ave and Maple Ave, and celebrates the diversity of the goods and services they provide, therefore be it resolved that I, Bruce R. Williams, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, to hereby proclaim November 24th as Small Business Saturday, and encourage all residents to support local businesses by buying locally on November 24th and throughout the year. So, let me make sure, was there anybody here who was going to receive this? Okay, nobody here, so I have done this proclamation, and everybody should buy locally all the time, but particularly this coming Saturday. Next is the public comment period, and this is the opportunity for anybody who wishes to speak about anything, since we don't have any voting items this evening. If you'd please identify yourselves and keep your comments to three minutes, and we use the timer, and so it'll show the time and the lights on the podium, and we appreciate you staying within the time limits. Thanks.
I will. Hi, thank you. I'm Susan Wood. I live on Oswego Avenue, and recently the traffic restriction signs were put up by Montgomery County, restricting rush hour, cut-through traffic through Sligo Park Hills. In parallel, similar traffic restrictions were put up on Ritchie and Geneva Avenue, and this has caused some concern by, for some of the local residents. But this should not be a surprise, as this has been expected for over two and a half years. And since several council members were not on the council in 2010, I'd like to briefly review the history and ask the council to finally follow through on its commitments of 2010. Three years ago, there was quite a bitter and divisive debate because of the county plans to put traffic restrictions in Sligo Park Hills. It pitted neighbor against neighbor. But the council, giving you guys credit, crafted a reasonable solution, balancing the concerns about safety and traffic with concerns about car access down Ritchie Avenue. And on June 24th, this council passed a resolution, which hopefully you've all been handed. If you note on the last page, there were two key points to that commitment that was made in that resolution. One was to put in safety and traffic calming measures within nine months of June 2010, which would have been by March of 2011. And if the restrictions were in place by then, then the signs would have come down. But of course, the signs were delayed, but unfortunately, so were the traffic calming measures. So this problem that we're facing is a problem caused by the over-two-year delay by the city in fulfilling its commitment. And if it had followed through, the signs would never have gone up. So I urge the council to immediately start the traffic calming construction. I urge you not to reopen a very divisive debate. A solution is at hand if you finally come through and follow through on the resolution of June 2010. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Forty-six seconds to spare.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, your official peace delegate. I was listening to that session you had last week on the lawn chemicals, and I've been thinking and worrying a little bit about it. A lot of us senior citizens and handicapped and other people are on medications. I wonder if anyone had ever thought about the possibility that the interaction with these chemicals with our medication could cause a serious problem in the community and among our health? Because I've never heard anyone addressing that, but I'm on almost 30 different medications, close to it. And I'm wondering, you know, when I go out, if you see those yellow signs, if I could see them, I'd avoid them like cancer, because I don't know if they're going to react with my medications or not. And there's also other pesticides and stuff, you know, that are being sprayed around, too. And I'm wondering if we should be looking into more natural controls, like beneficial insects, beneficial fungi, and stuff like that that can control the insects, and we could also look into more natural forms of grass and start accepting natural for what it is, never mind trying to get the greenest lawn on the planet, you know, making it look artificially green. We should be trying to make it look natural, you know, without having to alter our environment and poison our environment in the long run, and possibly poisoning our citizens. I don't know, but I worry about that a lot, because I'm on heart medications, I'm on pain medications, I'm on cholesterol medications, I'm on a lot of different medications for my granulomatosis. And also, I'm on some hormones, too, like, what do you call it, prednisone, and that could react to some things that I'm pretty sure of, too, and I'm really worried about it. Plus the stuff we're putting in our animal feed, we're putting hormones and antibiotics in our animal feed, and I'm wondering, they can react to our medication, I'm pretty sure, because some of our medication warns us about mixing antibiotics and mixing other steroids together, and they warn us against that. So I think, you know, as a city councilman, and as people should be participating in their community, come out and speak at the public comment period, that's what it's for. So please, everybody, if you hear me, come out and speak on this. We need to do something about this, because everyone knows somebody on medication, and I'm worried, you know, that we may be losing people without even knowing it. Without even knowing it, it could be passed off as a heart attack or a blood clot, or it could be passed off as a stroke. We don't know. A lot of our mental illnesses could be passed off as natural, but they could turn out to be interaction between pesticides, lawn controls, and other stuff like this, these artificial green stuff. Cosmetic isn't the way to go. Natural is the way to go. Thanks for letting me share, and please think about this. Get doctors' opinions.
Thank you.
My name's Ellen Savian. I'm a resident of Sherman Avenue, and I wanted to go back to the topic that was prior to this gentleman's topic. But this is more specific to the increase in traffic on Sherman, Lee, and Jackson avenues as a direct result of restriction signs placed at the Hilltop Ritchie community, which was a direct result of the signs placed by the county. So it's sort of having a ripple effect on other communities, and I just wanted the council to be aware. When my husband and I purchased our house, we looked at various things, like rental property next to us, commercial properties, shared driveways, state highway, Department of Sanitation proximity, parks, parking lots near us, religious buildings that have parking lots, public transportation routes, bus routes, ambulance routes. We all know that we live in an urban area, and we accept some of these, what I consider obstacles or things that come with our property. And we pick our houses based on what we can live with and what we can't live with. So while we understand the change around us is less than, not always under the control of Tacoma Park residents, like the Sligo Creek County road signage, we are not ready to take additional problems while other streets in Tacoma Park lessen theirs for the sake of bettering their situation at the detriment of other Tacoma Park residents. This exact situation unfolded as the woman prior to, so I'm not going to read too much into the history. The city council action failed in three ways at the time. The city council agreed to permit such temporary signage without considering the impact of these signs on other streets, namely Sherman, Lee, and Jackson. The city council failed to put a date on the resolution to take down the Ritchie signage, and obviously failed to meet their deadlines in the resolution on calming. The city also failed to consider the impact on Tacoma Park businesses, specifically the added burden upon parents dropping their children off at the Hilltop School. Just like the county's guilty of not fully considering the impact of their restricting signs, the city council is guilty of the same. And to add salt to the wound, the city manager herself recommended to Tacoma Park residents to use Sherman Avenue as an alternative cut-through in route in order to get to their destinations in light of the signs the council approved. While our goal is to be even, to give an even playing field once again and remove the temporary signs by early spring, March 20, 2013, we are open to other suggestions, comments set forth by residents within the SS Carroll Association and the Tacoma Park community at large. And I've included in my statement some other comments that residents on Sherman Avenue and Hancock sent to me in light of me coming down here. In sum, we would like the city council to commit on paper that these signs will come down, that the resolutions will be met, or in the alternative, the council will consider other measures in decreasing the resulting runoff, cutoff through traffic in the SS Carroll Association blocks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ron Verdunk, and I live at 110 Ritchie, and I head up the Ritchie Citizens Association, of which Terry and Susan and Richard, who are present, are members. And I'm here as well to talk about what Susan touched upon, and then Ellen just now as well. And similar to Ellen, we moved into Tacoma Park in 2006 onto Ritchie Avenue, and certainly one of the considerations that we had when we bought the house that we did had to do with the aesthetics of the neighborhood, if you will, in part, and certainly looking at things like traffic flow entered into our equation, because we never foresaw that a street like Ritchie would be used for almost more commercial purposes, as it seems to be in the mornings and late afternoons during the weekdays of late. And so we look forward to a return of more normalcy, if you will, in terms of traffic patterns on Ritchie in the years ahead. But, you know, certainly this is something, the subject matter at hand of concern to all the citizens, I would dare say, of the Ritchie Citizens Association, folks who live on Ritchie, who live on Maple, for that matter, who live on Geneva and Oswego. And, you know, we are resolute in our interest in seeing the traffic calming work be initiated. We understand it's scheduled for springtime, but we did have an understanding, as we understood it with the city council. This issue, as Susan touched upon, was taken up and decided upon, really, in 2010, that were signs to go up limiting traffic in the adjoining neighborhood, then these signs that are now in place would go up here in Tacoma Park. They have, and to be quite frank, I go to the bus stop on Maple Avenue every morning, Monday through Friday, and I'll be honest, it doesn't seem to me that the traffic signs that are up are actually limiting a lot of traffic. In fact, there's no question in my mind that there's been a pickup in traffic from Maple going on Ritchie up to Ponty Branch and onto Silver Spring, I suppose. But, so one can question the actual effectiveness of the signs that have been put up. And again, that's my observation in the mornings between 7:30 and 8 o'clock typically, Monday through Friday. But we appreciate the council's consideration of this issue. I understand it's going to be addressed maybe in discussion next week, but again, we feel strongly that we want to see Ritchie Avenue and the adjoining streets return to a more typical traffic flow, and we can't wait for the work to begin to make that a reality, and the sooner the better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I know there might be a couple other people who wish to speak. I just want to check with the city manager about the anticipated schedule on the installations. My sense was that the last word that we had was that it would be in the spring, and that there are some meetings going on in terms of the, kind of the final, working through some of the details.
They have to get the final design, the design finalized with the community, and the intention is to do the construction in the spring.
And I think there's-
I don't have more specific dates.
Okay, I think there's a-
I also want to make sure that, I mean, Mr. Verdunk mentioned that it would be discussed next week, and obviously it would be December 3rd.
Right, so this will be an agenda item on December 3rd, two weeks from tonight.
Mayor, in addition, the nine months for the installation of the traffic calming was nine months not from the 2010 resolution date, but rather nine months from the decision by the county on Sligo Park Hills traffic restrictions.
No, that's not true. I believe, I believe that the idea was that the installation was going to proceed. I do need to double-check on exactly what transpires, and I'll have that information for the meeting on the 3rd.
It was hoped to be completed actually prior to the signs, to any of the signs were in place.
It was never the intention of our community to see the road restricted.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Tracy Burge from 6 Jefferson Avenue, one of the affected neighborhoods, and I'm happy to hear from the Ritchie Association that their intention was not to have us restricted. When you bought your house in 2006, I had already been commuting up Ritchie for 20 years. You changed my life. Traffic is like water. It seeks the path of least resistance. So by building a dam on Ritchie, we've created more problems on 410, which is not designed to carry the traffic, it already has. We also diverted traffic in front of two schools during the time when children are walking to school. I have always planned my routes to avoid every school I can. One of the other concerns I have is that this resolution was passed on the basis of concern. It was passed on the basis of worry and anticipation of what might happen. It was not based on fact. If it were, I would love to see the survey. I would love to know how many cars were going up and down Ritchie. What was the average speed? How many of those cars were residents? How many were going to Green Hill's nursery? Let's have some numbers. In the last line of the resolution, it says that the traffic calming measures, after they're done and the signs come down, should the traffic reach a number of 200 cars an hour, the signs will go back up. I'd like to know what was the original study? 50 cars an hour, 500 cars an hour? And which hour was that? Or is that average over the three-hour period? I'm kind of a numbers person, and making decisions like this that impact a wide area based on concerns seems more qualitative than quantitative, and I don't really get a real feel-good result from that. That's it. Thank you very much.
Richard Payne, I'm sorry to stand up, I live on 39 Oswego. And I'd just like to comment that the traffic signs were put up as regards a in-depth county study, which was done prior to this resolution. There's about a six-year history on this. If you, I can send you the county report, which details all the traffic patterns around here. I believe the numbers coming up Ritchie at that stage were well above the limit that the county requires, at which point it allows a town within the county procedure, or a road within the county procedure, to ask for restrictions. We have no such restrictions. We have no such procedure in Tacoma Park, but all the numbers that you need are there. You might say they're outdated now, but of course, because this is dragged on. But you can see the numbers. And if you send me your email, or I can give you mine, I'd be happy to get that information to you.
I would just like to remind everyone that this whole issue started with county restrictions that were put in, and so as we think about where we move forward, that might be an area that we look at.
Hi, my name's Dee Bratton. I moved here 67 years ago with my family on 17 Jefferson Avenue, and all the talk I hear, I've not heard, as much as Ellen spoke, I've not heard anybody mention Lincoln Avenue. Many years ago, several of us came to meetings about Lincoln. The traffic on Lincoln, as you know, is probably the longest hill in Tacoma. People fly up and down Lincoln. We tried to get the council, the city, to do something. We had a lot of little children, they're all in college now. Nothing was done. We asked for a study. They fly up and down Lincoln. Two weeks ago, I was on Jefferson cleaning the curb, and I counted, just for fun, I counted in one half-hour period, 42 cars went up and down- counted in one half-hour period, 42 cars went up and down Lincoln. They have yellow lines on Lincoln, but nobody pays attention. We've had several accidents because people fly down the curb and they clip each other. We've had one car go into a telephone pole. It's a very dangerous street. I don't think the answer is the humps in the road, that would be horrible. But what I'm saying is, I feel for the people in Ritchie, but Lincoln has been going on for years. We never got any feedback, went to several meetings trying to get attention drawn to it, and now we're talking about every street but Lincoln, Sherman, Jackson, et cetera. And I feel for all them, but I think if the people of Ritchie, in due respect, would come and sit at Lincoln just for a few hours a day, they'd find that we have a real problem, maybe worse than Ritchie. Maybe. And it's, I don't understand, I guess, how some streets get these signs and others just go by the wayside, which then, at my old age, led me to believe that if you're not politically up there or inclined, or know somebody that knows somebody, they listen to you and then it's gone. And like I said, all of our children are grown now, they're all in college, but try to get out of Jefferson Avenue onto Lincoln. It's very dangerous, very dangerous. And I know a lot are cut through. I walk two miles every day all through Tacoma Park, so I see a lot, like some, don't like some, so, but thanks for listening.
Anybody else?
Well, they want me to come up and say I agree. I would like to go ahead and say that I've lived in Tacoma Park, well, I was actually born in Tacoma Park, and we moved back when I was 11 years old. I've been in Tacoma Park for probably 42 or more years, almost 45 years, going to, actually, it's about 50 years, more than I thought. I used to go ahead and take the Hilltop. I'm one of them that's directly affected. I'm two blocks away from Hilltop. I would love to see something like, at least to let the neighborhood be able to drive those, to have some kind of a permit or something. Put it on Montgomery County, go ahead and tell them, hey, you know, they're, they're cutting on our streets. For me to go to work in the morning and avoid Ritchie Avenue, I have to go down Sligo Creek, I cannot make a right-hand turn onto Piney Branch because that's backed up to Flower. So I go onto Wayne Avenue, and then I go through by the Metro, get back on Colesville Road, so I can make a right-hand turn on the East West Highway. I'm one of those that have to go ahead and travel to Bethesda on the East West Highway. It takes, it used to take me a half hour, it now takes me 45 minutes. It's added 15 minutes and three miles to my commute, and I just would, I just want everybody to be fair. And I do feel for the Ritchie Avenue, I feel for the Hilltop, I do. I never flew up that road. I always respected them with their dogs and would crawl by them and even stop if I needed to. I do respect the neighborhood and the speed limits. Anyway, I, that's just my say. Thank you for listening.
And can you give us your name?
Carol Kolski, and, and I live in the middle of Lincoln Avenue. Thank you. By the curb.
Okay, thank you all very much, and as I said, we'll, we'll be talking about this topic on December 3rd.
Thank you.
Council comments.
How can you follow that?
Councilmember Daniels Cohen is going.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to, I want to thank everyone from the Ritchie side of the hill and the Lincoln-Jefferson and Sherman Avenue side of the hill for coming out tonight and, and at least broaching this subject called "Those Signs at Ritchie and Maple." I really appreciate, I know that public speaking, I think, is second only to death in, in the fear factor, so, and I know some of you are really shy about it. I really appreciate that you, that you came out, and please come back. Let's see what we can do about, about possibly, I mean, you know, possibly moving up the time that, that the calming devices are put on Ritchie. I don't know that that's possible, but we can, it, we, there's at least an avenue there, pun intended. So I think you all are a bunch of Tacoma Park residents for lots of years, some of you, and, you know, you're willing to work, wonderfully work out any differences that we have. I really appreciate all of you. Thank you so much. And congra, now, I'm on to other things here. Congratulations to the Recreation Department. That took me quite by surprise for being awarded the grant from Legit, the Local Government Insurance Trust. It's something that Tacoma Park and Maryland Municipal League, Municipal League are, are involved with, and I, just the innovative thought about applying for the, for the grant is spectacular. And, and I thank, and thank Legit for sharing the wealth. I really appreciate that they are willing to give up some of their, their profits. That is really special. For us to have 10 mannequins and 10 baby mannequins to, at least for the staff to start with, learning AED and, and CPR is, is really, is fabulous. Now, I want to also take a moment to wish everyone a really happy Thanksgiving. This is the time of year that I make sure I watch Jimmy Stewart in It's a Wonderful Life, just to remember not to take too many things for granted. Scrooge with Bill Murray certainly will deliver the same kind of message, also a must for me each year. A little corny, but regrounds a person on what is important in life. So now, it's that thankful time of year, and we all know we will be someplace this week where the hostess is going to ask everyone to say what they're thankful for. It seems to be an easy question, but really dabbles into the heart, and it makes one a tad vulnerable, showing that soft underbelly that we all hide so well. I'm thankful I have had the opportunity to serve the people of Tacoma Park in a way, in a way a bit different from how, how I've served them in the, in the before time. This has been a really exciting year to teach an old dog a few new tricks. I'm thankful to live in a place where I can be as much of an activist as I choose and, and also rub elbows with some folks who are really making things happen. I'm thankful I continue to have the support of Jack Cohen, husband extraordinaire, willing to accept my continued desire to do this work, grinching about it a lot, but still willing. I'm thankful that I have a brother who enjoys the work as well. I'm thankful to live in this very special town that most of the time is like the legendary Brigadoon, but instead of showing up every 100 years, we are here every day. I want to thank all of you for letting me play in your game. I really appreciate that. I also want to thank the community Advent, the Adventist Community Services, and send huge gold stars to Terry and Joyce Siemens and their wonderful volunteers for taking, taking on collecting and giving of all the food for a special Thanksgiving for those who might not have enough food. This is a huge undertaking, and this year they did it in spite of some challenging experience, experiences. Close to 1,000 families served, are served in our town. These are really special people who always go above and beyond the call of duty. And just as a quick, I totally forgot about Small Business Saturday, so forget Black Friday, all right? Don't even waste your time with Black Friday. Go up to any of the stores in Tacoma Park and do a little bit of Small Business Saturday, this Saturday is 24th. I usually go up there and do a little, a whole lot of holiday shopping during that Small Business Saturday. It's really important to take any dollars that we have, that we possibly can spend here, and spend them inside our beautiful city limits. Thank you all. All right. Thank you, my gosh.
Other? Councilmember Schultz.
Because we're on the top topic of traffic restrictions, I thought it'd be a good idea to make a comment. Again, I think this is the, perhaps, certainly, I've spoken on it before at least once, maybe The State Highway Administration has scheduled the reconstruction or resurfacing of the bridge on New Hampshire Avenue that crosses Sligo Creek. The work is scheduled according to the S.H.A.'s public notice to start in quote "the spring" and end quote "in the fall," which is a very, you know, vague timing. But, and that, the notice informs the city that, that two lanes of New Hampshire Avenue, one in each direction, will be eliminated while this repaving work is being done. So that, that means there's going to be a lot more traffic, which will be slower on New Hampshire Avenue, that's a good thing. But the problem really stems from the fact that Sligo Creek Parkway is going to be closed. So this will have ramifications throughout the city of Tacoma Park, just as much as the ramifications of closing or limiting access to the Sligo Park Hills neighborhood. In fact, it'll probably be even more serious because whereas those restrictions are for certain times of the day, this is just a simple permanent or temporary 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week closing of Sligo Creek Parkway, starting at New Hampshire Avenue. I don't know how far it'll extend, we don't know that yet. It's going to cause clearly a significant rerouting of traffic onto other streets, presumably Ethan Allen Avenue and presumably Carroll Avenue. Ward 6, which I represent, sits in the middle of all that, and it has two famous cut-through streets that allow people to avoid the big intersection at the crossroads at University of New Hampshire. So it becomes pretty popular when, when traffic gets all fouled up in that area. And so the street that I live on, Wildwood Drive, especially in the evening rush hour, gets a pretty steady stream of cars coming through, such that it's kind of difficult to, you have to look both ways when you're walking across the street, particularly in, at night, at this time of year. We've put up with that, that's, that's just like was said before, part of the urban ambiance that we all cherish. Would, well, I don't know what I would do without the roar of engines going by our house, but, so we, we, you know, you learn to live with some of this stuff. But this closing of Sligo Creek Parkway for, I don't know, six, seven months, maybe more than that, eight or nine months, who knows whether the, the project will take longer or less time than scheduled. That's going to cause a lot of people who are traveling north and south on New Hampshire Avenue and are accustomed to using Sligo Creek Parkway to look for the very next best alternative, which would be Glen Side Drive going to the west, Erskine Avenue going to the east, and also Wildwood Drive going to the west. And I've been anxious about this, residents in Ward 6 are anxious about this, because we don't know what we can do to deter some of this cut-through traffic. I've mentioned it at a couple of previous city council meetings, and while I, I have not had any feedback from the State Highway Administration or the city, or the Department of Public Works in, in specific, as, or the Police Department here in the city, as to what might be possible solutions. I, I've had some reassurances that, that this is probably not going to be as bad as I think it is, and I wish that I could believe those reassurances. So for those of us who, those of you who live on Ritchie Avenue, or Sherman, or Lincoln, you know, I understand what your anxieties are about. So we have a problem here, and I'm still not getting the feedback that I need from anybody in authority in the state or the city to tell us what's going to be happening to all this traffic that's going to be seeking alternative ways to get to and from work, to and from the hospital, and to and from a lot of other places. It's a concern, and again, I'm reiterating this on behalf of my residents who are concerned, not just for myself. And I appreciate at some point that we get busy thinking about solutions. I don't, I'm not proposing any solutions at this point in time, but we need to have some discussions about this soon. Thank you.
I believe we did get a little, little information from State Highway that their original detour was marking Ethan Allen as the detour, and they were going to be putting traffic in some odd ways, and that there was some discussion back and forth with them about different ways to deal with it.
The, for traffic coming southbound on New Hampshire, the detour will be to eastern. It will not be to Ethan Allen. The, I'm happy to sit down with you, Councilmember Schultz, about some of the discussions that I've had with State Highway. I do think that one of the things that we learned from the Sligo Park Hills traffic study was that the folks who were cutting through that area, at least two-thirds of the, of the traffic was from folks, you know, well outside of the city, coming down New Hampshire and then going on Sligo, Sligo Creek Parkway. One of the things that I think we will find is people just avoiding Tacoma Park altogether because at some point it, it makes more sense to do Beltway or University Boulevard. Nevertheless, I appreciate the concern about the, the streets that people do, at least try to experiment with, and we can see if there's some creative temporary solutions.
Yeah, I'd like to have that conversation soon, so that I can understand what, what you understand to be the State Highway Administration's plans, to the best that you know them. And then maybe at some point thereafter, we, we might have a community meeting for both Hillwood Manor and New Hampshire Gardens, their benefit, and then that would be an opportunity for you and I and others to receive questions.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to everyone who came for the public comments tonight. I think, you know, we all recognize that the traffic restriction signs at Hilltop and, and Ritchie Avenue, and those that restrict access to Sligo Park Hills are, have been disruptive to the community. You know, I think all of us live on streets, and this is not just Ritchie Avenue, but anywhere in the city where we would like to see less traffic, calmer drivers, and more courtesy from the people coming through our neighborhoods. It seems the, the early people in on traffic restrictions, you know, didn't meet with the same level of resistance that this is meeting with. But I think that, that the community, my neighborhood, has been very considerate and has not been talking about, you know, keeping people from using our neighborhood or using the streets in our neighborhood, but strictly asking for some restrictions for the period of time while some traffic calming measures can be put in. I look forward to the discussion on December 3rd and, and hope that it will open up the discussion in a broader sense of, you know, what, what are, what is our policy going to be for traffic restrictions within the city? And that's including the ones that have already been put into place. And then I would thank Councilmember Daniels Cohen for her mentioning of the Thanksgiving food giveaway at Adventist Community Services, but I find it embarrassing for her to identify two people by name.
I don't know the rest of them.
Because there, because there are a whole lot of people that, that make it possible for the, you know, to be able to provide food to our most vulnerable neighbors in Tacoma Park. As she mentioned, it's a food for 1,000 families for Thanksgiving dinner, and as you can imagine, I'm not making the donations to make that happen, and I'm not the one who's carrying every one of those turkeys. There are a lot of people working, a lot of people brought, put the money in to make this possible, and, and a lot of people are actually doing, putting their sweat equity into this project. But again, thank you, and thank you to all those people doing it.
Any other council comments? I've just got a couple of quick ones. I just wanted to mention that I had a meeting- I just wanted to mention that I had a meeting on Friday with Pat Baptiste, who's the mayor of the, of Chevy Chase Village, which is the Chevy Chase that is, that starts at Western Avenue, goes up to Bradley Lane from Wisconsin to Connecticut. Had a number of things I wanted to talk with her about, and one of them was making sure that we have good dialogue between the city of Tacoma Park and some of the other municipalities which are inside the Beltway in particular, the older communities, and also fall under the authority of Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning, so that as various aspects go forward with the revision of the zoning code and proposed zoning text amendments, that we have the benefit of understanding the issues that they're dealing with and their thoughts on these matters so that we can make sure that as we maybe go forward and take positions, that we understand what our fellow municipalities are feeling about these issues so that we don't go forward with something and they're wondering, gee, why did we take a position that we took? So it was a very good meeting. She was here for well over an hour. We also talked about some ways that the, all of the smaller municipalities in Montgomery County can do some better work through the MML Montgomery Chapter. And she toured the building and was very impressed with the number of the programs that we do here, and just had very, very nice things to say about a lot that we do here in the city of Tacoma Park. So I felt that was a really good connection to make. And for those who don't know her, she served, I believe, for eight years on the park and planning, planning board on the commission. When I attended the joint priorities hearing last Wednesday and testified on behalf of the city, there was a near unanimity of theme among the county and the municipalities that transportation and transportation funding was the most important issue. I've had follow-up conversations with a number of county council members and have been setting up additional meetings with them and trying to make sure that the city of Tacoma Park is working in concert with other municipalities and the county and working toward getting the funding that we need in Annapolis and talking about strategies to do that. And I'll be sharing some additional information with my colleagues, but just wanted to let you know that I've been spending a fair amount of time on that and coordinating what we're doing with the county and the other municipalities. Councilmember Schultz.
Just wanted to ask if those conversations will be involving at some point the city of Baltimore, whose plans for the Baltimore Red Line are at a somewhat similar stage to the planning process for the Purple Line here, and those are as equally, that, that project is, is equally threatened as, as our Purple Line by the failure of the trans, state's transportation trust fund's funding.
There's talk of trying to get the Montgomery County delegation, the Prince George's delegation, and the Baltimore delegation working together on this and various types of pressure and where to apply that pressure and how to apply that pressure because it involves the Purple Line, the CCT, Corridors Cities Transitway, and the Red Line in Baltimore. So all of those things are being considered.
Good.
Perhaps I can follow up on that. On, on Wednesday, December 12th, it's just been announced that there's a regional transportation funding summit with the Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and Baltimore officials to urge a stable income for the transportation trust fund. I, I was, I brought it with me to announce this evening, so I'm taking advantage of this and just seeing, taking into this. So Wednesday, December 12th, from nine to one in Annapolis at the Low House Office Building, and I'll send out the email to all of you. It's, I think, very important that those council members who can attend do attend. The, the words that I've been getting are that a number of folks in the legislature don't realize how important these projects are to these local, to the local municipalities and counties. And so I think the, that showing something very strong up front ends up being very important. Yes?
Time is up. That's the cog luncheon day.
Yes, that's, so we, I've been talking with folks about those of us who could, who are going to try and do both, might go to Annapolis and be there from like nine to 11 and then go to the cog function, nine to 10:30 or whatever's going to work. It's recognized that they're the same day, and it just ended up having to be, they were trying to set it up for either the 5th or the 12th and weren't getting the, the callbacks that they needed, so they had to go with a later date.
Right. So it's, it starts at nine, and it, and it is to go to one.
And did the city manager have any other comments?
I do, thank you. I've distributed at the dais my quarterly report. It's got the quarterly financial report, and it's got a work-in-progress quarterly staff report. I'm very interested in having you review it, make comments, give me some feedback on what kinds of information, especially on the staff parts, you find helpful, what kinds of things not so helpful, what format, that kind of thing. So I look forward to your comments, and then I'll be giving feedback to our staff, and we can work on preparing something that's a little, maybe looks a little bit more formatted for the next time. There's a couple of things that I've just noticed that I wanted to change in this already, so before I even post it on the website, I will make a couple of changes. For example, in the human resources section, it talks about a number of positions, folks who have been terminated. It's really separated. These are people who, that we did not have firings in this time period, but just, it's termination out of a computer system, but that has other kind of connotations when people read that. Also, just to let you know that the police report, they look at a calendar year, not a fiscal year. That's why you'll see that as third quarter. And as I said, I am looking for your feedback over time so that for the next quarter, we'll have something a little more refined. The, I want to follow up a little bit on the Purple Line. I did go to a Purple Line project team meeting on Friday. It's, they're moving forward planning, presuming that there will be funding. They have a lot of community meetings coming up, and they're particularly looking right now at plans for integrating art into the whole system, and it's very exciting in the private conversations, though it's clear that any work that we can do on the funding side is important. On a couple of additional legislative matters, Councilmember Mail will be testifying on December 5th on the notice for WSSC spills. And also, I'll be looking to see what kind of work we can do with other municipalities to get state legislation that will change some of the provisions related to speed cameras because we've, when we had a legal decision that we can no longer assess late fines, it has changed our revenue substantially, as it has with many municipalities. Some, some really quite remarkable declines for certain municipalities. And there's also a interest in doing something, a bill that was proposed last year as well, that civilian employees could be monitoring cameras, not just sworn officers. So those are two bills that we'll be looking for, force support on and promoting coming up. Those are my items.
I know that the, that Chevy Chase Village has seen a 25% reduction in their speed camera revenues because of the lack of ability to charge the late fees. And I know staff was working on the information on the small lots on the zoning text amendment, and we haven't seen anything yet. Is that going to be forthcoming?
I got something put on my desk late this afternoon. It's a lot of information. I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Okay, good. Thanks. Because in case we want to have any comments on that, we'll need to do that in, in our meeting in two weeks. Okay, and thanks for this. This will be very interesting to see.
It's not, it's not designed to put you to sleep, so hopefully you won't.
We don't have any minutes to adopt this evening, so we'll move to our presentations. And the first one is the presentation of the fiscal year 2012 comprehensive annual financial report, and we have some folks here who are going to present to us.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Dan Kenny, partner with Cone Resnick, and with me is Tricia Griffiths, senior manager with Cone Resnick, and we're here to present the June 30th financial statements. First thing I want to mention, when you guys hired us, we were Resnick Group. We've merged with J.H. Cone. That was in the middle of October. We were 19th in the country size-wise. They were 17th, so the combined firm is now 11th in the country. Okay. Oh. Okay. What I'd like to do is we're going to go over, we, we gave you a city council presentation, and included in the presentation is the independent auditors' report, the report on internal control, and the report on those charged with governance. So the first item is the independent auditors' report indicated we've audited the entity as of June 30th, 2012. The second paragraph talks about how our audit was conducted, and the third paragraph indicates in our opinion the financial statements are fairly presented for the year end. And the fourth paragraph indicates that our audit was conducted in accordance with government auditing standards, and we've also issued an internal control letter, which I will talk about that. Going on to page four in the opinion, the last two paragraphs talk about the MDNA and the pension and our responsibility with respect to that. And, okay, so let's move on to page five. This is your internal control letter, okay? And the internal control letter, there's two areas, internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters. Excuse me. The internal control over financial reporting, if you go to page six, the last sentence on page six, first paragraph indicates that we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that we considered to be a material weakness. And under compliance and other matters, the last sentence on the first paragraph indicates that the results of our tests disclose no instances of non-compliance. Okay, moving on to the those charged with governance letter. It talks about significant audit findings. You have certain estimates within your financial statements, and our responsibility is...
What's the page number?
That's on page seven. Under significant audit findings, then it talks about qualitative aspects of accounting practices. The first paragraph, the last sentence, indicates that we noted no transactions entered into without any accounting guidance. And then after that, it talks about the accounting estimates. You have three estimates regarding allowance, the depreciation, and the accumulated vacation leave, and those areas were consistent with the methodology with the previous years. And moving on, on page eight, there are no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. The next item is the corrected and uncorrected misstatements. Those items have been given to management. There were no disagreements with management. Management representations have been given to us. To our knowledge, there were no management consultations with any other accountants regarding any accounting issue. And on page nine, regarding other audit findings or issues and other matters, there's no items of significance noted there. Okay, so that's it with respect to the reports that I wanted to go over. Tricia's now going to go over the presentation with respect to the CAFR and some of the key financial items. Thank you. Tricia.
We've provided each of you with some PowerPoint slides. We also have them up on the slide. Let me get that though. The first slide is...
If you can hang on just a second. Yeah, but what, the, the first one.
How was that covered? What was this?
It looks...
Well, they're, they're looking at something different.
It's the same.
It's the same? Okay. No, it's not. I, I, I...
While a mayor, while a mayor is in the door...
There was, there was a little confusion up here because you were talking about page numbers, and I, and what you were talking about was familiar. I had read it, but I couldn't find it in what I thought I was looking for.
For convenience, we provided a packet this evening that actually put all of the reports all together in one place, and that's what Dan went over on.
And I didn't get one. That's why, that's why I'm confused. Thank you.
So in that packet, the first item that Dan went over was the audit report, which is actually included with the CAFR itself.
Right, okay. That put page numbers on what I had.
Yes, exactly.
Gotcha. That's why I was having problems.
Yeah, so that just includes a package of each of the reports individually. So they're in one place and easy for you to look at.
We're trying to make it easier. We need that, obviously.
Like I said, it all sounded familiar, but I was like, where is it? Okay, now.
So in the highlights...
On the PowerPoint.
What we've highlighted for you all this evening is pretty much the net assets of the city, followed by revenues and expenses, all entity-wide financials from the CAFR. The first slide is the total net assets of the city over a three-year period. We've highlighted 2010, 2011, and 2012. From 11 to 12, there's about a $3 million increase in net assets. That appears to be due to an increase in property tax revenue, mainly from an increase in the tax assessment base. There also, that also is due to state income taxes and state highway user taxes as increase, and speed camera revenue. Those are the main factors. A lot of this detail is also found in the MDNA and the beginning of the CAFR. The next slide highlights total revenues over the past three years on an entity-wide basis from the CAFR, from 2010, 11, and 12. The increase between 11 and 12 is $990,000. Again, most of that is due from property tax increase, charges for services, and some recreation increase. The charges for services is a large increase, which mainly includes speed camera revenue. Our next slide breaks out the revenue pieces in the four largest areas, first being property taxes as your largest revenue base. Again, the increase shows just property taxes on its own from 11.38 million to 11.67 million. That, again, from an increase in assessment, which then increases the tax revenue for the year. The next revenue base is grants and contributions. Again, on three-year base, that looks quite a bit different because 2010 had a large grant for the community center, which of course, that did not come in, the same grant in 2011 and 2012. That grant was like one point, around that $1.9 million. Charges for services is your next area. That increased over 2011 by about $388,000, mainly due to speed camera fines. And then the last largest revenue area is intergovernmental, which is an increase due to income tax and highway tax revenues. The next slide is the expenses. As you can see, it's actually very comforting to see that the expenses actually are decreasing on a year-to-year basis, even with the lower economy, your revenues had a little bit of a difference, especially 2010 was higher mainly to, due to those grants of the, for the community center. So the expenses are a decrease during the current year from 2011 at $84,000, mainly due to some decreases in general government costs, which is like workers' comp, unemployment, and other insurances. There's also a $31,000 savings in training and contract costs, which was highlighted in the MDNA as well. Finally, we also broke that out by your four largest expense functions, function areas, public safety being the highest. Those, public safety expenses increased during the year about by $423,000. Public safety expenses increased during the year about by $423,000, mostly due, as it would be expected, speed camera expenses would increase with the speed camera revenues. As you're putting more in speed camera, you're going to be expending more, and you're getting more revenues for those expenses. Public works is the next area, and that's a decrease due to lower infrastructure costs. In 2011, there was some cost for ADA sidewalks and infrastructure. General government is the next area. That decrease goes along with the decrease in, on the prior slide where your workers' comp insurance has decreased. Whoops, I hit the thing, sorry. There it goes back. And then the difference between 2010 and 2011 is a change in grant-funded expenses. So the grants that came in in 2010, you have the expenses to go along with them also in 2010. Then the last largest expense area is recreation and culture, and those stayed pretty equal between the years, so they're pretty fluent. And that is what we have for your highlights for the CAFR. So we'll take any questions that you all may have.
Is that it? Okay, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just start off by thanking Ms. Brooks for, once again, keeping us in the great financial position that you moved us into after joining the city. It's been, can't tell you what a pleasure it has been to have you as in charge of the finances here at the city, because you did, you overcame the old problems, and not just put us in a good position, but you continued to keep us in that position, and I thank you for that. And as far as your report goes, I found it completely boring. It was much more exciting when there were all kinds of problems going on in our finance department. And I guess my only question would be, you know, in the best of times, there's usually things where we can improve. What would you suggest that we should be working on to improve things?
One item, and I didn't mention it, but you received, for your CAFR, you received the certificate of excellence in financial reporting. I'm not sure, is your budget presented to the GFOA?
No, it's not.
No, it's not, okay. You know, that would be something to consider. I'm not going to recommend it because it is, it's very onerous on management to get that done and present it. But some of the other entities we audit, they actually submit their budget document as well, and they receive an award. So that's something you could consider.
Have you reviewed our budget document?
Yes, we looked at the budget document, but...
Would you consider it to be in the category that would likely win an award?
I can't answer that at this time.
I know. I thought I'd put you on the spot anyways. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm just curious about something, and that is, I'm very familiar in my, from my work with regard to reading audits of private entities, corporations, LLCs, et cetera, and used to seeing something that says words that are like an unqualified audit or stuff like that. And then there's tiers of qualification that go down from there. But I gather in the accounting standards and auditing standards set for governmental entities, that's not the syntax that gets used. Is that correct?
Well, not exactly. You did receive an unqualified opinion. So that independent auditors' report that's in your CAFR on page 10, and in that document, the first report I went over, it doesn't say you received an unqualified opinion, but it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements were fairly presented," which means it's unqualified.
Well, that was my supposition, that that was a different way of saying the same thing. I just was looking for that.
Correct. And if you were to receive federal funds, and if we were to perform an OMB A133 audit, on the single audit, in the back of the report, it summarizes all the different reports, whether or not it has little boxes, whether or not, you know, you have a material weakness or a significant deficiency, or you've received an unqualified opinion or qualified. So it makes it easier. But you didn't have any federal funds, so that report, you know, it wasn't in there.
I knew you'd have the answer. Just thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I, this is pretty overwhelming. I'm not going to kid around about it. You know, wow, it's very impressive.
Did you have a chance to read this yet?
No, I didn't read it word for word. I'm not like the mayor. He may have read it all. I read some of it. But I also, you know, I wasn't sure when to give Yolanda Brooks the gold star. I guess it's going to have to be on December the 3rd, because you always, you're always right on top of everything. And I don't know how you do it. This is way, I can just barely, what is it? Debits go out the window, and credits go in the drawer. I can't remember, I can't even remember where it all goes. So I really, really appreciate your hard work, your dedication to the city and to your job. You're really an impressive, an impressive person. Thank you.
Thank you all for appreciating my long hours spent here.
Yeah, I know, I know. I mean, goodness gracious. Wow.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank Ms. Brooks for all the work that she did, that she put into this document. Question I have for you, you guys do audits for other municipalities, I assume?
Yes.
Are there any unique things that cities are doing to raise revenues, other than speed cameras, property taxes, fees? Is there anything different out there?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, you pretty much touched on it.
That's it.
That's the number-one thing right now, is really the speed cameras and red light cameras. That's been the hot trend really for the past couple of years. Ask for anything new and upcoming that we've seen?
No.
Not so much.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions and just a couple of observations. I can go through the page numbers. I know that two of them, I'm not sure who can best answer, so maybe I'll start with those. And they...
In the CAFR?
In the CAFR, yes. And on page 66 in the CAFR, it talks about the various new GASP pronouncements, and it says that, you know, we don't think there's much material effect. I was just wondering if there's any one there that's worth mentioning, just as something that has more of an effect than others, because that's a fairly long list of them.
The one coming, the ones coming up, 63 and 65, 63 is effect for next fiscal year. 65 is the following fiscal year. They really go together, so both will really, we would suggest that they get implemented next fiscal year. They changed the wording on the entity-wide financial statements and some wording in the fund financial statements, but not a whole lot of actual effect. You'll see new sections between, with, underneath the asset and liability sections as deferred inflows and outflows, things that are no longer really considered assets or liabilities. They'll be considered an inflow or an outflow of funds. And the name of the statement will be changed to the statement of net position, rather than the statement of net assets. So it's not like a whole lot of accounting differences.
Right, and that came about with the derivatives. You don't have any swaps or derivatives, but that was one of the major items there.
The other big thing that's coming up is going to be statement number 67 and 68, and that's going to be effective in fiscal years 14 and 15. So there's a couple of years to come up with that. That's going to start to be accounting and putting liability on statements for pension plans. So not just OPEB plans, but as well as pension plans.
That will have a fairly big effect.
Yes, that's the big thing that's coming up, but there's still two more fiscal years until that.
Because I know the one that had a big change, I don't remember how many years ago, was in putting more of the, like, the fixed assets onto the statements. Yeah, that was GASP 34. Right. So that kind of changed the look of the position that we're in, and this pension one will have that same effect. And there was another page that had some mention of some, of GASP, and that was page 85, where it says, "We implemented GASP 54, and the fund balance for the years 2003 through 2010 had been revised." What was the, kind of what was the effect of that? Yeah, that was the name change. It used to be fund balance, unreserved, undesignated, and now you have committed, assigned... Okay, okay. Restricted. Right. I noticed that change, but I wasn't sure how that had...
That actually changed last year.
Right. Okay. If I can just run through the other ones, some of them, they might just be comments, and some of them might be a question for Ms. Brooks, I think. I just wanted to note that on page 17, I just wanted to note the $93,000 for the MEA revenues that were used to install the energy-efficient HVAC system. I'm glad we got that grant, and I think that was a good expenditure, and I'm glad that it's called out in here. On page 20, I think it's a very helpful graph that basically makes it very clear that the public safety revenues and expenses are much more closely matched than the other areas in the city, and it reflects the tax duplication payments that we get to...
The speed camera.
And the speed camera, that we, it reflects good work on the part of the city manager and the staff in making sure that we are up to speed on those areas. The question on page 27, the last bullet point at the bottom of page 27, early redemption of the 2010 bonds for $1.2 million, is that the pension obligation, or is that...
Yes, that's the one that we paid off to unfunded pensions.
Okay, okay. I wanted to make sure that's what that was. The income taxes were up. Do we know if that's a result? Is that a timing issue, or is that the, in fact, income tax revenues are going back up again? I sense it's the latter. Anybody?
We would defer that one to Ms. Brooks.
They went up slightly.
Yeah, that's a nice variance.
Income taxes, we've found, are very unpredictable. And so partly we're, you know, look and see what we get in, you know, when we get the amounts in, to see if we can make some predictions. But it's awfully hard to...
So it could be partly timing and partly the fact that...
No, what it was, we got extra money this year, and we were told that that trend would not continue. I think that was mentioned in one of the quarterly reports that was presented by the city manager.
For that one there.
So it was, it was one of those amount where they hold things, and then they said, "Here it is, but don't expect it again."
That's right, we got the last, that was the last kind of surprise that we got, yeah.
Page 73, the variance on the legal, do we know whether that area, whether that was the city attorney, or whether it was the other various council?
I think it was more the city attorney.
Page 83, the top line of figures, it didn't quite make sense to me, invested in capital assets, net related debt. All of the more recent figures kind of are in the same ballpark, but you get, there was a big jump from 2006 to '07, and then when you look at 2003, that was so much less than it became in a few years. I wasn't quite sure what was going on there.
So which year are you questioning?
Well, I'm just wondering, like, it was 2003, it was $2.4 million, and then it went to $6.39 million, $12 million, then we're up at 17, slowly trending up. How did we get in 10 years from $2.4 million to $24 million?
I think at some point, we had to capitalize the infrastructure.
Is that what that is? Okay, okay.
And then you had the community center and the public work facility.
So it was, it was the GASP change that caused that?
Part.
Page 87, it was instructive to look at what's happening with our revenues, where the percentage of our revenues that comes from property tax just keeps going up, because the other areas, like highway user revenues, are going down, where in 2003, when you take the general property taxes as a percentage of all of the revenues on here, we're at 70%, and it just keeps going up and up and up as you go to later years, to where it's 78% in 2012. It was also interesting to look at page 90, looking at the Tacoma Park general tax rate over the 10-year period, either holding steady or going down. And when you look at the county tax rate, it went down for the first, up, you know, a little more than halfway through the period to 2008, and then it started going back up So that when you looked at the direct and overlapping total, it went down, but it's kind of not really going, not changing too much recently. It went down for a while, but the counties has been going back up. Page 96, looking at the largest taxable assessed values in the city, and the only question I had from that, I could see where a bunch of them stayed the same, and some of them might have changed names, but Pepco used to be number four, and they dropped from the list?
They're like number 11.
So they must have, their value must have dropped.
Well, I think some of the other values increased, too, so...
Right, no, it's just interesting that their assessed value dropped. Maybe it's because they're still charging us for their outdated infrastructure. Page 98, it was interesting to look at 2003 and 2012, and the FTEs basically were unchanged. There was a little rise going up to 2010, and then it dropped back again. But the overall 10-year period, it basically stayed the same, and my sense is, in the 10 years before that, it also stayed about the same. So it's a constant churn of what's important, what the priorities are, the types of positions change, but in the overall scheme of things, the FTEs stay the same. And then the final one, it's always interesting to look on page 102 at the age distribution in the city, and when you look at the difference between... in the city, and when you look at the difference between 1970 and 2010, the young adults' numbers went way down in the city, dropped by about almost 2,000, and the five-to-seventeen-year-olds went down to a lesser degree, and the forty-five-to-sixty-four-year-olds went up, and it's just an interesting way to see the makeup of the city and how it's changed over that forty-year period. So I always find everything that's in the CAFR very interesting, because it can provide, especially those ten-year trends are very helpful in understanding where we've been and where we're going. So thanks for all that information.
It's required.
I, I know, but, and it's, and it, and what's required keeps changing, and therefore, following the format changes can make it difficult sometimes to figure out what's going on, and that's why following what the changes are with GASPY are important to keep track of and know what's coming, and then you still forget sometimes what those changes were and how they show up. Councilor Smith, did you have something else?
I don't, I just wanted to mention one thing, and that was, we also found the auditors very good people to work with, very thorough. I don't know, Yvonne, did you want to say anything about how the process went?
It's also required.
I mean, the process went pretty good. We were prepared for audit, and things went well. They moved pretty quickly, and we would cap up to date.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And if you can remind us what are, whether we have a policy or a general practice of every so many years changing auditors, and where we are in that process?
I, I don't know that we have a practice necessarily with the auditors. We do have a general attempt to, about every five years, to reassess contracts, kind of ongoing contracts, so that we're able to, you know, weigh competing firms for various, for various services, and, you know, sometimes earlier if we need to, but that's, I think.
Yeah, I think the trend has been every five years.
We've generally, we've tried to look at five-year periods.
Okay, because I know the, the council of government's policy is every four years change. Okay.
So this is year one?
Right. So we look forward to seeing you again.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and continuing Financial Night, we're having a presentation of the actuarial, actuarial valuation for the police employee's retirement plan. Welcome, Mr. Loewen.
Thank you. So you have an actuary filing an auditor. This is quite an experience. Yeah, I have, actually, a relatively short presentation. Every year, we do our evaluation for the pension plan to tell you how much to contribute for the next year. It's the first time I've been in front of the city council, so I, I'll go over a few background things first, if that's okay, and then get to the real part of the presentation. There are four parts I want to talk about. First, again, is the background, which I'll be very brief about, and explain how the plan works, basically, and then the results of the 2012 valuation. This sets your contribution for fiscal year fourteen. Okay, we do the valuation now, the results get done, and we say, okay, for your next budget, you know, this is your contribution. And really, that, those are the main two things, the background and the valuation results, but since I'm here, and actually, since you're interested in GASPY, I'll talk about the GASPY changes a little bit, for accounting, which will be coming up the next, next couple of years, and then very briefly about Moody's also, because Moody's is looking at how to value bond, pension obligations that the cities and counties have. But really, the first two are the, are the key, key areas. For, for background, your police employees used to be in a state pension plan. They had the same benefits that all other employees had. There wasn't, wasn't anything special for them originally. So if you were, you know, looking at the other police plans in, in the state, you'd see that they could retire younger, usually have bigger, bigger benefits, and that wasn't true here, prior to 2001. Then in 2001, the decision was made, in order to attract and retain police officers, we have to give them a police-type pension plan. Police-type pension plan basically means they can, they can retire earlier, they have a bigger benefit, and usually associated with that is they've got to make higher employee contributions as well. Most public pension plans, employees pay a share of the cost. So that was, that's what the decision was in 2001. You could have, at the time, joined a plan within the state called LEOPS, for the Law Enforcement Officers Pension System, but that plan would have been more generous than what you wanted to offer, and you would have lost the control, so you sort of decided not to join LEOPS, but set up your own plan in 2001. So you still have some employees, general employees in the state plan, but all your police officers are now within the police plan at Tacoma Park. The benefits that you offer your police officers, basically, after twenty-five years, at any age, they can retire on half pay. There's also your early retirement provision at fifty-five, for those who have fifteen years of service, but generally, most, most police officers, by the time they're fifty-five, they've got the twenty-five years in anyway. So I think of this as being really a twenty-five-and-out plan with half a pay. That's not a particularly generous benefit. I mean, it's 2% of pay for every year of service. Most police plans in the state of Maryland are more generous than that, but it does allow them to retire early, at a, you know, with a good pension at a, at a younger age that they couldn't have gotten had they stayed in the state plan. The, after they retire, they do get cost-of-living adjustments, COAs. They go up with the CPI, but they're basically capped at about 3% per year, so you couldn't get more than a 3% increase after you retire. There are some disability benefits in the plan, and they've been sort of the cause of some of the cost increases over the years, because initially, we had a lot of disability applications, and they're very generous benefits. But the, the amount of the benefit depends on when you were hired and the type of disability that you have, meaning that those who were there in 2001, we gave them the same benefits they would have had had they stayed in the state plan. That was a relatively easy definition of disability, but anyone hired since 2001, the severity required to get a disability benefit is higher than it was before, and if it's not a catastrophic sort of disability, the benefit won't be two-thirds of pay, it'll be, be reduced. So there have been some changes in the disability area to sort of try to control those costs, because, again, it has been a problem in the past here. And employees contribute 7% of pay. So we're going to see contribution rates from the city that are much higher than that, but employees also make a contribution here, and that's a lot more than they would have put into the state plan. The state plan 2001, part of it was not contributory, and even today, I think it's only up to about 4% of pay, but employees do contribute to the plan. So those are my background slides. Again, you, you originally were in the state plan, you set up your own plan to be competitive, to attract and retain police officers, they can retire twenty-five years on, on half So as I said before, we do evaluation. This is an every-year evaluation, determine the budget number for the next budget cycle. So the 2012 valuation is done, determines the contribution for fiscal year fourteen. The contribution rate, you know, we could express it in dollars, like it's a million dollars per year, but we usually do it as a percent of payroll, because that percent will be applied to your fiscal year fourteen payroll, and that will determine how much contribution to put in. So if you have more officers between now and then, you'll put in more; fewer officers, you'll, you'll put in less. And one of the reasons I'm here today, I think, is because that contribution rate is increasing a lot between fiscal thirteen and fourteen. It's going from 34% of payroll to about almost 40% of payroll. This is on top of the 7% that the employees put in. It's going to get your contribution to about a million dollars. In dollars, it didn't increase as much, because actually, your payroll went down from the prior year, but as a percent of payroll, which is how I usually look at it, it, it is about a, get over a 5% increase. And the main reason for the increase is, we'll see some details on the next page, is that we're recommending that we lower the expected return assumption of the plan. Like any pension fund, you really rely mostly usually on investment return. Yes, you put contributions in, but you build up a large fund to cover the reserves, so when someone retires, the money's there, and it's the earnings of that money that really will pay a lot of their benefits off. Well, the, in 2001, 8% was a reasonable assumption. These days, the feeling is, 8% is probably too high. If you'd done a survey even as late as 2009, 8% was a common assumption for public pension plans. The state of Maryland's down to 7.75. I still have a couple of plans at eight, but not very many. I got a number of counties where we're actually at seven and a half, 7%. So it's painful, as you'll see, but we are recommending, and the pension committee has sort of accepted, the idea of lowering interest rate, investment return assumption by a half percent. So we can see the effect of that on the next page. Very small type, I know. Basically, these are the key results from our valuation, and the first column of numbers is the last-year valuation, the 2011 valuation, which determined your cost for fiscal year thirteen. And then the last three columns are three different versions of what these, these results could be this year. We're actually going with the last column, and the last column, as you can see, changes the investment return assumption to seven and a half percent. It adopted something called asset smoothing, whereas before, determining your unfunded liability, we looked at the market value of assets. Most plans, as they get larger, use a smooth value, meaning they're going, going to defer investment gains and losses in, over a period of time. They recognize some in the year they occur, and some the following year, and some the following year, usually over about a five-year period. As, as the assets get larger in the plan, the main driver of volatility are investment gains and losses, because one year, you might make 25%, next year, you might lose 5%. We hope to earn an average of seven and a half percent, but in order to dampen the volatility that that has on your contribution rate, we recommend deferring recognition of a percent of those investment gains and losses. So for the first year, we're, this year, we're recommending doing that. That actually counts for the differences between the, the middle two columns. Let me cover a few other things here. The top of the page also is the head counts, how many employees are in the plan. You've got forty active employees, nineteen retirees now, and a couple of people that have left, but when they hit retirement age, they'll start their pensions. So you have a total of sixty-one participants in the plan. Your payroll, last valuation was 2,007, now it's dropped to about 2,006. These are the liability numbers, the next numbers. So last year, the total liability for all your categories and members in the plan was 16,400, it's up to about $19 million. We use this new lower discount rate. The assets, 7,800, 6,800 last year, about 7,800 this year. As you can see on the last column, you've got about $19 million in liabilities and about lower than eight million in assets. Your front ratio is not real high, hasn't ever been really high. Back in 2001, your front ratio was only 20-some percent. So the good news, we're up to 40-some percent. The bad news is, we're not 100%. So if you need to know what you can do with some of your cash, like, I can give you some suggestions here, but you might not want to put them all, all in at once. But in any case, you've got about $11 million unfunded liability in the last column. I'll really skip down to the bottom line here. The bottom line is your contribution rate. So last year, you'll see a 34.18% contribution rate, we saw that on the prior slide also. At far right, you can see the 39.7%, but to get there, if we had made no changes at all, it would have risen from 34 to 36.83. By doing the asset smoothing, costs actually went down to 35.9, but then the interest rate raised it up to 39.7. So to some extent, the asset smoothing decision tempered the effect of dropping the interest rate, but everyone in the pension committee, I think, felt like I did, it really was time to lower the interest rate. It's never a good time, but keeping the assumption at 8% really was viewed as sort of being not, not very likely. So again, this is something we think is important, and it will be part of your budget request next year, why it's going to be higher, because it's about $100,000 more in contributions from last year to, to this year. I'm going to, I'm going to move on to my third topic, which is GASPY, and as you know, GASPY are the accounting rules, and I'm particularly just talking about the pension, pension rules. And these are the accountants' sort of four watchwords, what they're trying to accomplish. They want transparency, accountability, interfered equity, and decision usefulness. There were accounting rules before for pensions, there were GASPY 25 and 27, and a lot of us have debated whether these are any improvements, and what the rules were before, but we didn't get a vote. We did write comment letters, so if you ever don't like what GASPY's doing, you want to write them a letter, say it doesn't meet one of these four criteria, and that's how maybe you get them to change their mind. But these are indeed their goals, so what do they do for pensions? Well, these pension rules cover both defined benefit plans, we call them DB plans, which is what you have, and defined contribution plans. They have two statements, GASPY 68 is about employer accounting, 67 is about plan accounting, and I think the lady before me talked about that, too. She said one will be effective next year, and fiscal 14 is sort of in one of fiscal 15, and I'll, I'll talk about that again, but there are two different statements here. If you've heard two things about GASPY, maybe you haven't heard anything about these new GASPY rules, but the first is that the unfunded liability goes in your balance sheet. So this is my, my generic slide I'm doing, as I'm doing a two-hour presentation. Here, I'm giving you my short version, so I'm going to give you a couple more slides, but in your case, for the police plan, you can sort of replace the $100 million number with $11 million number, as we saw on that one, one page number six, and the page numbers are, by the way, in the upper-left-hand corner of the slides. The unfunded liability for that plan is about $11 million. So somewhere in your footnotes, you're going to have a footnote next year, just to that effect, but come fiscal year 15, it's going to move out of the footnote and move into your, your balance sheet. So that's, that's one of the main things that happened. The other thing, if you've heard, a second thing about GASPY, is GASPY old rules had what was called the ARC, the Annual Required Contribution. So for fiscal 13, we said your cost was 34% of payroll. That was your, that was your ARC. That was your, that was not only your cash, you kindly contributed to the pension plan, but it was also your accounting expense. So long as you contributed that, you met your accounting expense requirement, you had nothing to put on your books. Well, now, we're separating cash funding from accounting expense. They'll be two, two different numbers. So GASPY's going to say, I'm going to tell you about how to do the accounting, how to do the expense, how to do the balance sheet, but the cash you'll put in will be the numbers we're talking about, the 34% going to almost 40% of payroll. That's your cash funding requirement. Your accounting expense will be a, a different number. It will confuse people. People will say, "What's my expense?" Or, "What's my cost of the plan?" "What's my cost? You mean your cash cost or your accounting cost?" In the private sector, the FASB world, people have been used to this idea that FASB tells me how much the expense is, and the IRS tells me how much cash I have to put into the plan. Well, that, that's the world we're now be going, be going into. So those are the two things about GASPY, if you've, like I said, if you've heard anything, it's putting the unfunded liability on your balance sheet, and the cash funding and expense are going to be two different things. Let me also mention, since I'm here, before I leave the, let me get one more slide first. Effective dates, a lot of words here, but basically, plan accounting is fiscal 14, employer accounting is fiscal 15. The main things you're going to be interested in is the, is the employer accounting. That means that the, the date when it shows up in your balance sheet, the date when your expense is not your cash contribution. So that's GASPY 68, that's fiscal 15. I mentioned again, your balance sheet number would be about $11 million for the police plan. You're also in the state, state plan as well for your general employees. That's what's called a cost-sharing multiple employer plan. You're in a pool with about a hundred other employers, some smaller, some larger than you, for your general employees. All you've had to do up till now, under the old GASPY rules, is say, "Well, the state sent me a bill, I paid it, that was my expense, I have nothing to show on my balance sheet." That's going to change. You're going to get, that plan has an unfunded liability also. They're going to slice and dice that unfunded liability up between the hundred employers that are in the plan. You'll get a letter from the state, fiscal 15, saying, "Here's your share of the accounting expense, and here's your share of the unfunded liability to put on your balance sheet." A trivia fact, fun trivia facts, the amortization period that we're trying to pay off the police plan unfunded liability is 22 years, and the state municipal pool, it's 100 years. So we'll probably get ours paid off before the state pool gets theirs paid off. That's one reason, too, where you may, it's good to have your own plan that you can control and make your own fiscal decisions, but, okay, but I'm going to, I'm going to.
Is 22 years starting from when?
I, I think from now, from, from, the way the evaluation's done, from 2012, so 2034, we should be, we should be paid off. Right? Now, of course, what will happen is you'll never really get there. You'll get there sooner or later, depending on how the market goes. Things will intervene, but if there were no gains and losses, you met your 7.5% return assumption, that would be the, the target date. Okay. Maybe the least interesting, or maybe not, beside GASPY changing their rules, Moody's is also changing their rules to, so to the extent you're interested in being in the bond market and borrowing money, they're going to look at pension obligations, pension debt differently, and they're basically going to say, "I'm not interested in how you measure things at a 7.5% assumption. I like to see it at a bond rate, in this case, 5.5%." So they're going to redo all the pension liabilities at a lower rate. They're also going to just use the all the pension liabilities at a lower rate. They're also going to just use the market value of assets, not the smooth value of assets we talked about. And they're going to want about a 17-year amortization, not for funding, they can't force you to fund it. They're going to look at, in the case of the states, what the state's cost would be if they amortized things over 17 years at these very low discount rates. The effect of that, sort of nationally, is that there are public pension plans in the U.S. that have unfunded liabilities of about $766 billion, and that would become $2.2 trillion. So it's a much more conservative measure of pension debt than the way things are funded. Comment letters have gone in already. I wrote a few of them. Again, this is about bond rating. It's not about cash contributions. It's not about accounting expense. So one of the confusing things is when someone says, you know, what's my unfunded liability? Well, do you mean for cash funding, for accounting, or for Moody's? And there's actually another purpose, which I won't even get to. So our world is getting more complicated. We've got multiple purposes, multiple measures of liabilities. What I'm hoping, though, for the most part, is sort of cash is king. The most important thing is, how much is your cash contribution you have to put into the pension plan? Are we on a path to get that 40 percent funded ratio, which now, which used to be 20 percent, on a path to get it to 100 percent? How fast can we get there? Like I said, we're on a 22-year period. It's unfortunate that we have to lower the investment return assumption, but again, it was the right thing to do. So it is what the pension committee recommended. And, oh, all these wonderful caveats. So that's my presentation.
And the last slide was the caveats, the small print that we're not going to read.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, it says, these are based on assumptions that, you know, are going to be wrong. They could be better, they could be worse. So it's most likely expectations. They're based on all the, as you said before, is this an unqualified opinion sort of thing? I have my own set of actuarial standards, and these are done according to the code of conduct and the appropriate actuarial standards. And it's done for you. It's not done for anyone else. These are, these numbers to be used by you and your auditors.
So the net result of all this is, in three years, whoever's sitting up here is going to be going, uh-oh, because everything's going to move from the footnote to the balance sheet, and that deficit is going to make things look a lot worse.
Yes. I mean, Moody's says that it shouldn't matter, because they knew it anyway. But I think, as it becomes more public and more visible, you know, people will say, gee, we have a big unfunded liability, what can we do about it? Some might react one way, others might say, why not 20 years instead of 22 years? Why not 10 years? You know, can you write a big check one year? What else can we do? Others might say, seven and a half percent, maybe it should be 7 percent. Maybe we should invest differently and be more conservative. But the fact is, you have a plan here for the police plan. It's a relatively modest plan, as public safety plans go. It's an important plan for them, and if you didn't have this style plan, it would be very difficult to attract police officers, at least to retain them. You might be able to hire them and train them, and then they'll go somewhere else. Actually, I would be worried about that now, because it isn't the best plan around, for sure. But then again, it is a defined benefit plan. It does give 50 percent pension after 25 years, does have a COLA. So it is not without value, for sure.
And the private sector has been moving away from defined benefit to defined contribution, and there's pressure on governments to do the same.
Yes, particularly for non-public safety. But public safety is a different animal. You know, you have a police officer who's injured in line of duty, and people have a hard time saying, I don't want to take care of this person. So if you look at some of the states that have changed to defined contribution plans, you'll find that quite often, it does apply to their public safety employees for that very reason. So even the, while there's not much of a trend yet in the public sector, and I'm not going to say where there will or there won't be, whatever there is, is much less for public safety.
And it's also interesting to be reminded that the difference in the contributions for this plan are 7 percent for the employees, and next year, 40 percent for the city. And that 40 percent is a pretty big figure.
Yes, it is.
Because I know, I recall from a few decades ago, when I worked for somebody in the private sector, their cost of all of the various benefits ended up in the mid-20 percent range. And when you look at this, just the pension is 40 percent.
Yeah. Not uncommon for public safety plans. I mean, state police plan is over 50 percent of payroll, is the state's contribution.
Councilmember Schultz.
Just, I understand the need for your decision to reduce the prospective return on investment from eight to seven and a half percent. Eight percent, even seven and a half percent seems high, given what treasuries sell for these days. But I understand that that's not where pensions invest. They invest in much more lucrative kinds of investments, with that we all could do that with our own little private bank accounts. But it goes both ways, in the sense that, in the event that the economy does continue its ever-so-slow climb out of the Great Recession, which is certainly a dubious proposition, nobody really knows for sure, and interest rates rise. And if they rise in one place, they rise everywhere. And I'm just, sort of think, I'm just talking out loud, this isn't so much as a question, just sort of musing over this, is that that interest rate could someday go in the other direction, could go up to eight. What has been, say, over the last, I don't know, 20, 25 years, to pick a time, an arbitrary time range, the range in which that actuarial estimate has moved from high to low?
Yeah. The experience in the private and public sector are a bit different in this area, by the way. So I'll give you the public sector sort of answer. In the public sector, I started in '78, doing this sort of work. And in the late '70s, I was the actuary for the city of Baltimore. And I think at the time, they were at 6 percent assumption. And they quickly, in the '80s, the city and a lot of other plans were getting up to 8 percent. A few of them, by the mid-'90s, were getting to 9 percent.
To nine?
Nine. I can name a few, like New Hampshire. Most didn't follow suit. They stayed, they grew very, very slowly. And then, after the tech bubble burst, you know, in 2001, 2002, we started seeing some of those assumptions come down. And I think, like I said, even 2009 survey, they were at 8 percent still. But the changes in just the last two years have been pretty dramatic, if you compare the last 30 years. I think most plans are down on average of a quarter to half percent. So we see a lot at seven and a half, a lot at seven, three-quarters. State of Virginia is at seven. I heard one state just went under seven. But I think that the new sort of average is probably going to be around seven and a half. Smaller plans sometimes have lower assumptions than larger plans, because they can't make the same sort of investment choices. They own the same size, efficiencies, or options to invest money in. I think one of the complaints that people give about these assumptions is that they're too sticky. They move too slow. So, yes, yeah. So when they should have come down, when they were at eight, people complained, why are you at eight? No one's going to make eight. You should need to come down. Now, stickiness is not a bad thing, as you see the effect on the contribution. So we know the direction we have to go. The question is, how fast? A half percent change is a pretty big change. Am I saying we're done? Well, I hope we're done for a couple of years. But let's reassess, like you said, see where bond rates are in a couple of years from now. But we probably shouldn't be as sticky as we are, as we have been. In 2001, we were at 8 percent, and it took, you know, 11 years to make our first change. And maybe that is taking too long. State of Maryland was at 8 percent, they're at seven and three-quarters. You know, they're, CalPERS, you know, they actually recommended dropping it, I think, at half percent. They went a quarter percent to look at the next quarter next year. In New York City, they actually recommended taking it from like eight to seven percent. Well, they didn't take it to 7 percent. But they are indeed going to lower the assumption. So I'm very sensitive to the issue of not being too sticky about the rate. It does have to fall, it does have to rise. But a little bit of stickiness is not a bad idea. I think you can look around for comfort of, what's everybody else doing? Of course, that just means, well, we're all wrong together, maybe. We're all right together. So don't take too much comfort in that. You've got to listen to your investment professionals and look at, you know, where they think the future returns are going to be. So the answer to your question, therefore, is, it was very low back in the '70s. It quickly in the '80s got to be relatively high. It came down very, very, very slowly. And everyone now knows, maybe we've got to move a little bit faster. But a quarter, half percent change in years is all you're really going to want to see.
So the historical range within recent history is narrow.
Six to 9 percent. And that's generally within that. If you're in the private sector, it's different. Private sector, it would have been in the mid-'70s, 6, 7 percent, going up to about 10, 11 percent. And then today, forcing to use bond rates, and then dropping to 5 percent. And then recently, Congress getting them off the hook, and they're back up to about 7 or so. So wider range in the private sector, much more volatility and a different environment.
Maybe that's why municipal bonds are considered to be a fairly conservative investment for average investors, as long as the ratings are there. Because then, you know that there's not going to be that volatility in the market.
Right.
Okay. I thought, that's helpful. And I appreciate your insights into that. And I can, it helps me to appreciate that a half a percent drop is something that currently is necessary, maybe could have been done earlier, but certainly needs to be done now, and that we just have to deal with this increase now, substantial increase in our unfunded liability.
Yeah. One reason we didn't change it earlier was, a year ago, we changed the mortality table. So, you know, we had to do one step here at a time.
Thanks.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I've got a question regarding the unfunded liability. But first, thank you for the report. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We're currently at $11 million. So do you foresee 10 years from now that that amount doubles?
I hope not. I hope it's smaller, but it's possible. What would make it double? You don't make seven and a half percent. You give large pay increases. You have a lot of disabilities. And that sounds like what happened the last 10 years. So if the next 10 years are like the last 10 years, not necessarily on pay raises recently, but on some of those other events, it certainly could happen.
So, but what, what is it that you see, that I guess I'm not seeing, that that wouldn't happen?
I think we've made some changes in disability benefits, try to make sure that that doesn't happen again. But we hope. The pay raises are within your control. And if you're going to give a large pay raise, you've just got to know that there's a pension cost associated with that. And that could also drive up the unfunded liability. So those are two of the big factors. And the other is investment return. So your question, understandably, is, why do I think we're going to earn seven and a half percent? Why don't I think we might earn 4 percent, which is maybe what a lot of funds have earned over the last 10 years? It is, it's very possible. If you'd like, I can run these numbers at 4 percent. You won't like the results. And I think a lot of my clients, and a lot of other funds, in the state of Maryland, near general employees, got the same issue. I think that generally, though, the thought is that equities will still outperform bonds, and equities will still earn a premium, although they are volatile. But if we do have repeat in the last 10 years, could the number double? Sure. Now, the good news, I think, is the funded ratio percent, shouldn't give you too much comfort, should improve. We're so low at 40-some percent. The percentage will get better. But in dollars, which is what you're more concerned about, dollars could go up.
But if you extract out the years that are so-called the Great Recession, wasn't that the best market we've had in a generation or 20 years?
The '80s and the '90s?
No, no.
Sorry.
We started in, didn't it start to...
We started in 2001. We started at about the worst time you could have started. That being said, the state plan didn't fare very well at that point in time either. And in some ways, it wasn't a bad time to start, because you had no money. You started in 2001 with a plan that was 20 percent funded. If you're going to have 10 bad years, it's better to have 10 bad years when you don't have any money, than to have 10 bad years when you're 100 percent funded. So while it was a tough 10 years in the market, because your funded ratio was so bad, it didn't affect your contribution as much as it did, say, the state plan, where they were well-funded 10 years ago. Well, if you're well-funded, and you think you're about done getting to 100 percent funding target, then all of a sudden, you earn 4 percent over 10 years, you're in tough shape. But actually, I hate to say it's kind of funny, but it is, if you're going to have 10 good years and 10 bad years, you want the last 10 to be the bad years, and the next 10 to be the good years, as we start finally getting that funded ratio up to a decent-sized number. But again, bottom line is, if we have the next 10 years like the last 10, you'll watch it go up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's taken very helpful.
Thank you.
We'll take a short break, and we'll come back for our last items. And we are at Agenda Item Number Three, which is Identification of Budget-Related Questions and Suggestions for the Council Discussion in January. Remember that we're going to have the discussion in January. We don't necessarily have to have the discussion tonight.
Right. We don't need to have it tonight. Councilmember Mail had sent an email with his thoughts. I've got a list sent to me from Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Thank you. There have been some other items that have been mentioned by a number of you over time, and I'm keeping a running list of those. But one of the things that I wanted to check in with you was that especially, kind of having this financial discussion tonight, if there was something, some different kind of thing that just occurred to you, or you had a question about, that you want me to add to the list or think about, this is the time.
It seemed like there was an obvious one.
Which is?
Is there anything that we want to do to address the pension shortfall, given that it's moving from the footnotes to the body of the financial reports over the next few years? I'm not advocating that we do that at this point, but I think we need to consider it.
It has to be, it has to be part of the thinking in the long term, about how that all looks. The discussion in January will be primarily focused on the approximately $1.4 million that was kind of, I won't say leftover, but not necessarily allocated during the last budget session. That consisted of the money, additional money that we got for the municipal tax duplication for police services by the county council of $653,000. And then there was $750,000 that the city manager had identified as wanting to set it kind of on hold to save up to pay off the 2005 community center bond. And there were different opinions about whether we wanted to do that, and so that money was not allocated or identified that way, and it was left unallocated. Part of the other parts of the discussion, I think, are some sense about for the FY14 budget. If you're thinking about you want to keep the tax rate the same or make some adjustments, or if there's some other major initiatives that you have in mind, that all of that kind of be thought about. And there may be some allocations that you want to make during this current fiscal year, because they're one-time activities that make some sense and could be dealt with. But if there's some other things that you just want to wait until FY14 budget discussion, that's fine. But that January discussion, we kind of identify those various pots. And so, that's what we're looking for. We will, as staff, present the kind of compilation of ideas, the different kinds of monetary impacts those ideas have. And I would assume that we would make at least some recommendations on some of the items.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity. I think it's important and something that we haven't always done in past years. Two things. One is as far as the kind of excess money that we had postponed making the decision on until January. My original preference with that money was to return it to the taxpayers since it was duplicate taxes, really. But since the council had made the decision not to do that, my preference would be that we use that money to, that we not use the money for new projects, but that we use that money to buy down debt, either applying it to loans that the city has or using it for the police pension plan. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and again, I just really appreciate, you know, talking about the budget-related questions for the coming fiscal year. The one area that I think we should really focus on this year is the library. This is a new day and age and printed books are kind of waning in the public interest and digital media is certainly moving forward in leaps and bounds. And I think that could have profound effects on libraries across the country. I think it provides us with a fantastic opportunity for improving service to the community. And so I would like to have a forum or a discussion or maybe both here at the council to think about and brainstorm, you know, where we should really be going with our library, what we could do and what we want to do, whether we want to look at decreasing the amount of printed material we have and increasing access to digital media or if in fact, the kind of the type of service that our library has provided in the past, the rethought and new types of services be provided to the community. And I think now's a good time to be doing that rather than wait until our, you know, community, you know, asks us why that we have so many books and not some of the other services that we could provide. So anyways, I would like to think about that ahead of the budget time so that during the budget, we could see what, how we would like to target that, the money for the library. Because again, I think the council should be laying the division down of what we want to see in the library. Thank you.
And I just have to comment that I recall that Councilmember Simmons' initial engagement with citywide activities was saving the library.
Yeah, that's right. Absolutely.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I remain entrusted in one other aspect about the library, although I find what Councilmember Simmons said about positioning the library to serve evolving needs to be very interesting and important. And my comment though is that the library is still a physical gathering place for people of all ages and having that physical facility open additional hours on Sunday afternoons in particular, perhaps 12 to 5:00 p.m., would be quite interesting for me. In terms of additional spending, I know that we're going to be confronted with a number of requests to fund different programs that might individually not cost a lot, but could add up to something. But I would be inclined to say that we have mechanisms in place for considering those requests and on a regular schedule. And I would be reluctant to consider them now, but of course, we'll discuss that. I do want to add one other aspect to something that Councilmember Simmons mentioned, which is paying down debt. So I had also pushed to return the extra police money that we received from the county to taxpayers. Paying down debt's not essential, but it is a way essentially of returning money to taxpayers because it reduces tax burden in the future. And what I want to say in particular though is that I don't find the argument that debt for the community center is, yeah, sure, it's amortized over a number of years so that future users of the community center and other facilities paid for by that debt get to pay a share. And I'm just not really concerned about that. If we pay down some of the debt with money that taxpayers last year paid in and that is an unfair sharing because they might move out of the community and other people will move in and not pay their portion of it, that seems like petty nickel-and-dime type of considerations. So I want to bring that up right now that I don't find the idea of debt being an amortization where people who use the facility in the future pay for it. I don't find that to be a very convincing reason not to pay down debt. So I've meandered a bit here, but we'll have further discussions and can focus some of these things then.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to echo what Councilmember Simmons said about the library, but I would like to add, I received an email today from Bernice North and Wolfgang, I can't remember his last name.
Murgers.
Yes, yes, that is correct. And they talked about, I think, a very interesting initiative, having students help seniors, teaching them how to use computers. I think that would be something that, I mean, we already have the facilities, maybe we might need to buy some new computers. The library said that they would be interested in managing the students. So if we could put some money into that, I think that would be a great idea. And I will follow up, Suzie, with you with some other initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also, and I told you all when we discussed the budget before that I would come back with Sunday library hours. I did too, just exploring what it would take to open the library on Sunday and offer some programming. I know a couple of people have said, oh, no one will come. Well, you know, I just build it and they will come. They will come to Sunday at the library, the citizens of this community. I'd also like to explore, though I didn't mention it, alternative electronic books and other services that you can get via electronics. Though I am not a proponent of those books. I like to feel them, see them, smell them and hear the pages turn when I read. I may be beginning to be in the minority, but I still like the feel of the book in my hand and not the laptop. I have one of those and I didn't like it. But that doesn't, that means I might be living in the dark ages. It's okay though. And I'd like to explore what it would take, if we lowered the taxes, would it only be for one year? Could we lower them in perpetuity forever, one cent? Is that a possibility? I didn't put that, I mean, that was like so pie in the sky, I didn't even think about putting it on a list. But to lower the property, the tax rate from 58 to 57 cents forever, or would it just be a one-time deal? It would be a one-time deal?
The budgets are voted on every year by the council.
Yeah. And I want to point out, although this document that we saw tonight didn't appear to show age groups above 64 years increasing, that may be due to attrition, sometimes called other things than attrition. But it did show that the senior population is beginning to grow and I think that's going to move up. I also suggested that we do something to increase our senior services because those are the folks that are coming. They're all just on the cusp right now. They're going to be moving forward. And it's something that, I don't know what that's going to look like. Wolfgang has come up with some great ideas. Sherman Avenue is getting together with all the people over 65, talking about aging in place, actually sitting down with the whole street and seeing what it's going to take for all of us. So, I mean, these are issues that us codgers, us geezers, I will speak for myself, this geezer has in the back of their brain. And I guess, I also, I guess number one on my list was just taking the next steps in the junction. I don't know what that would look like. I don't know how many dollars it would cost, but taking the next steps. I talked about a switchback. You know, I think I threw a whole lot of things on the list. You know, continuing partnership with OTBA so we had activities there at least once a month beyond the food trucks and things like that. But I'm really wanting also some dollars thrown at the new teen garden or the new youth garden that's being dug up as we speak. Howard Cone is probably out there right now with a shovel, digging the hole for the new garden by the library. I know he was there earlier. It may not be, it may be too dark right now, but just, I think I put dollars in my proposal for them. But this is exciting to have an opportunity to relook at spending the money and not on shoes. So, thank you.
And you were speaking for all three geezers at the dais?
Well, I was just speaking for this geezer, all right? I'm a major geezer here.
Yeah, I was wondering, I don't know how you're going to pick people.
I would never speak for any other geezers but me.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'm interested in sort of continuing the comments that Councilmember Simmons started with, with regard to the tax rate thing. Last, I guess, May, when we adopted the tax rate for the current fiscal year we're in right now, we were confronted with a lot of public testimony about the $653,000 that was sort of a, sort of like a windfall that came to the city. And I was one of those that supported the idea that we not refund it to taxpayers, that we simply wait six months, which is what we've done, until January effectively, because to make some decisions. Because at that particular point in time, the case was made, not just by myself, but others, was that there was a certain number of big unknowns facing us. We were much deeper in the recession six months ago than we are now. We were faced with not knowing who the next president of the United States was going to be. We didn't know how negotiations in Congress were going to be going on a number of important national economic issues and some other things. But a lot of water has passed under the bridge. And I think in truth, we have a much clearer picture, notwithstanding the alleged fiscal cliff that we read about in the morning paper and all that. And I was frankly touched by the testimony we heard six months ago from people who said to us, you know, that we have this tax duplication money coming back to us that we didn't expect to get. And some people were saying, well, this is our money and it's important morally that the city council reduce our tax rate with this money, give it back to us because this is tax duplication. We've overpaid and we should not be overpaying. Now that the time has come to start thinking about what we're going to do with it, I'm strongly drawn to the idea of trying to reduce the tax rate if for no other purpose than to get it to the constant yield. Because frankly, I mean, I've lived in this town a long time, like a lot of us have, and it's really depressing. I mean, your assessed values go up and so you sort of say, oh, well, okay, I guess that I have more equity in the House or something. But the fact that frankly is, is when it comes time to write those two checks to Montgomery County for your property tax bill, that number gets bigger every year. And it's sort of depressing because you realize that it's never not going to get bigger every year. It's just always going to get bigger every year. And for people on fixed income, and that would be myself among others, that's kind of a discouraging thought. And I do think we, I'm not saying that this is my decision that I'm making now, but I do think we really, I want us to weigh that option carefully with the other options that have, we're talking about here, about how to spend the money, not just that, but the other police money that we got. I disagree with the idea that it's always best to pay down debt on long-term assets such as this community facility. The reason we do long-term financing, which is to effect a mortgage, if you will, is so that we don't have to use up all of our cash on paying debt. That's why homeowners get 30-year mortgages instead of 10-year mortgages because they could never afford to buy any house if they were going to have to pay it all off in 10 years. So you spread it out over 30 years. Commercial investors do that over 40 years commonly. Sure, we can spend the money to reduce our debt so that our debt service is lower, but I would think that we also ought to seriously think about not paying down this debt and using that money for the things that we need cold cash for, such as some of the programs that we've all been talking about up here. Library-related stuff, stuff for seniors, stuff for youth and probably many, many other things that citizens can come forward and legitimately say there's a need for. If we just take this money and pay down the debt, that's not a very imaginative solution because the money's gone. It's the cash disappears and we don't have it to reduce taxes. We don't have it for new programs or to add, say, a new position on the city staff. It reduces our flexibility. So this is another topic that I think I want us to spend time on, to weigh very carefully in our thinking. My inclination now is to say, we use some of it for that, for programs and we use some of it to pay, is to reduce the property tax burden on our cities, on our citizens. I just don't, I don't see the need of paying down bonds that are already at a really historic low interest rate. And those interest rates are continuing to go down on federally funded, sourced investments. So I think, you know, let's take advantage of the fact that we have these reduced interest rates. We did that with the Public Works project. We said, well, we can afford to do this. In fact, we said we couldn't afford not to do it because bond rates were so low. And to be paying those off now in a low-interest-rate environment, it just doesn't make sense. If we could refinance some of this debt to a still lower rate, that would be different. But that's not what we're talking about. So those are just some of the views that we need to be taking into account as we make these decisions. I would only add, you know, we're not going to find any shortage of things and good ideas to spend it on, this money that we to spend it on, this, this, this money that, that we will have to make decisions on in January. In my own ward, with one matter of some substance that I'd like to see us address is the future of the recreation center. John Webster, the director over there, as you all know, has been doing a fabulous job from everybody I talked to in terms of squeezing out programs in that facility, which is, you know, a seven-day-a-week facility that gets used about 17 to 18 hours a day fair, pretty really, really intensively. And he's upped the intensity of that in, in his, in his time over there, and I hear nothing but praise. But the simple fact of the matter is, is that that facility is limiting, literally, because of its functional obsolescence, and it's just old and wear, you know, wearing out very rapidly. It needs to be replaced. And we can all say, well, yeah, but that's something we, it's going to take a long time. Well, it's, we've got to start planning for it now and, and, and putting some time and effort into think, thinking about how we'd like to do that. And that's one of the things that I'd like to see that we focus on in our 2014 budget is to get that, that, that capital improvement planning process underway. Thank you.
I reminded that at the moment, that is technically a county facility.
Yes. I'm well aware that the ownership-
I knew you were. I wanted to make sure everybody else-
And the management are, and the land is a complicated situation, which is part of the, part of which we have to look at and understudy and figure out how to do it.
Um, I've got a couple, I've got one thing I want to make sure we add to the list and a couple of quick comments on some other things that have been brought up, and I'm not going to get into a discussion of the items, just a couple of points to make. One is, for the current fiscal year, there have been a couple of people who have approached me and said, we have the, we know we have the normal large grant, small grant processes coming up, but is there any chance to get anything in the current fiscal year? There, there were some noises made, not by, not by principals who are involved in those, but by other people who are aware of them, of potential requests from CHEER and from other things having to do with health things, including some of the stuff that Councilmember Smith has been working on. So it would be good to know if there are any of those types of requests that we're aware of, that we could consider for the current fiscal year, that would normally be part of that large or small grant process that we haven't already dealt with. Councilmember Schultz brought up, we were a lot farther along, or we will be at the six-month mark into the year with the, with the one, at least not now, the one that we're not aware of now in terms of resolution being the sequestration fiscal cliff. Depending on where that goes, that could change our outlook substantially just in the time between now and January. And various comments by various council members about whether it's a good idea to pay off bonds for things like this community center. I think the, the thing that was interesting in hearing the presentation tonight about the pension liability is that that isn't necessarily something that is something that's going to be kind of used by residents in the future, therefore it's good to spread the load and have the people who use it, this facility in the future, pay for it. Those pension liabilities are essentially, have been accumulated and therefore past accumulation of liabilities. And so I see the potential for doing something about those pension liabilities being in a different category than the bond, bond payoffs. And it would be interesting to know if that's how, kind of that's how accounting rules see it, is that the right way to look at it. Constant yields, yield was brought up, just a reminder that that is essentially different than the constant tax rate or reduced tax rate. Constant yield is essentially saying you only spend as much in the next year as you spent in the last year, which can be very restricting. So I just want to make sure that we use the, the right language when talking about things. And just a final reminder that the county is now, the county now appears to be serious about potentially changing the way tax duplication works and going from a, from the current system where essentially that money, that windfall that came back to us was in the current structure, the, the way that it would be more easy to make the argument that it was the duplicate, the tax duplication was on the shoulders of the residents is when, is when we might in the future shift to a more of a tax offset system that they're contemplating, that would raise, raise the city's tax rate and lower the county's tax rate. And we may be dealing with something like that and dealing with only getting the, the payments that we've been used to be, used to getting at a 41% level and the rest of it being grants. The whole, the whole process of making the arguments that we've been making successfully more lately about tax duplication may turn on its head and we may be in a very different situation, not necessarily for the next fiscal year, but going forward from there. So it's good to remember that that long-term trend looks to be now changing not in our favor. And we want, with any, any short or long-term changes that we contemplate in how we're dealing with revenues and expenditures, we need to keep that in the back of our minds.
On that, there is the, we are hopefully going to be influencing the report that will be coming out, and I'm blanking out the name of the, the OLO, the Office of Legislative Oversight, this report on-
In late winter, early spring. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I had three thoughts that came up when other council members were speaking, and I'm going to pin the first two of them on, on Councilmember Daniels Cohen. One, just a quick mention, I'm supposed to meet with Wolfgang Bergner tomorrow morning about the senior issues, aging in place, the effort to try to create, to move toward creating a senior village in Tacoma Park has stalled a little bit based on the lead person's pulling back for reasons that she's busy with some other things that came up. But in any case, I'm continuing to try to figure out what we can do there, and I do have some ideas that I'll bring up in due course. Second thing, you also reminded me that when we talked about expanded library hours, the concern came up that that would entail having a community center open and staffed as well. It wasn't because of the fire code and need to have the exits or something like that. But I think we also talked about it that time, well, shouldn't we be using this building, which we paid for with bonds and all of that kind of stuff and which has capacity for programming, for programming, potentially on Sundays? The recreation director, Greg Clark, did express some skepticism, is my recollection, about whether people would turn out for programming. But I think that when that skepticism was based on a different kind of programming in mind than the kind that I had, where there might be community groups as opposed to city-initiated programming that would want to do things here, that could include anything from concerts to meetings to, you know, whatever else. So looking additionally at use of the whole of the public part of the community center facility on Sundays would be quite interesting. And then the third thing about the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center, I've visited it on several occasions, and I'm in complete agreement that the facility is in great need of renovation. As I think we all know, the flow, the usage of the rooms is not optimal by any means, and it doesn't have the ability to host, let's say, more modern types of programming there. But I, I do know that I looked at the, at someone's suggestion, the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Master Plan, and it does envision the financing of a rebuild of the New Hampshire Avenue Community Center to be paid for by a developer, a developer that would presumably be attracted to develop in that area by the prospect of a Purple Line station there. Well, are we going to have a Purple Line station in Tacoma Langley Crossroads? Well, that would be great. As Councilmember Schultz identified in the last meeting, that should be a legislative priority for the city and for the whole of the Washington region, well, the Maryland part of the Washington region, and not just transportation in, in an abstract sense, this particular bit of transportation. So if everything went great, then we would get the Purple Line, we would get development that would upgrade the Tacoma Langley Crossroads area without displacing the current businesses and residents there, and we would get funding potentially for a replacement recreation facility. That's an ideal world. I don't know that it would cost an awful lot of money to put up a new building there. If we had to pay for it ourselves, that's not a great prospect, so I can't say what should happen if we have to abandon that vision of the Purple Line development and having other people pay for this. Thanks.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Grimes just reminded me of something I was thinking about yesterday as I was driving home and I passed the Long Branch Community Center, and I was struck by the number of cars that were there on a Sunday, where the parking lot was park full and clear out, if you're familiar with the facility, it's way off the road and cars were parked all the way out to Piney Branch Road. So I'm not sure what it is, what kind of programs they have going on there on Sunday, but I know that the vision of the community when we built this community center was it would be an active hub of programs, and I'd certainly like to hear ideas on how we could make it that. Thank you.
I'd be with church.
It would be an idea.
I would have no objection to a church renting this auditorium if they wanted to hold the service here, for instance.
I'd stop the food at home.
Okay. I think we've added some things to the list, and we should have a lively discussion in January that we've already started tonight.
I think it might be just about over.
So we will move to our final item, and it's 10:26, and we can go into great depth on these things. We can mention some things and be relatively brief. And I'll, I'll start, since I don't see any lights. I've got a couple of quick ones. This is the opportunity to share information about boards, committees-
You have two of those. Sorry.
Yeah, that's where mine went to.
Sorry.
Some interesting discussions at the COG board. I got some materials from that, and I was going to give those to staff and provide, there were some of them that were, there are links on the COG website that I can give you information on if you want to go look at it. And some of it was materials that were provided that aren't on the website, and a couple of those I will provide so that people can have copies. And the same goes for the National Capital Region Emergency Preparedness Council. We had some particularly interesting updates on preparedness in the region and how the, how the various funds have been used, the Urban Area Security Initiative funds and some of the planning that's gone in, particularly the group that's been working on improving coordination in the region for things like storms. It came out of the Snowmageddon storm with the particular concern about people getting out of the district and being, I think our, at the time, our city manager was seven hours getting home after, after that storm. So there was, there was a really good report that everybody kept referring to at last week's meeting and said, you know, it's all in here, and so I'll be providing copies of that. There have been some continuing discussions that are heating up a bit about the ladder truck. I had the opportunity to talk with Chief Bowers a little bit last week. Didn't get particularly good feeling about where things are going on that. Councilmember Daniels Cohen may have a thing or two to say about that from the volunteer board meeting last week that she was at while I was testifying at the joint priorities hearing. But that is a continuing item of concern to the community, and we have a long history of trying to keep the ladder truck here. It hasn't been here for a number of years, and it's currently at Station 16, which is the station right next to Blair High School, next to the baseball and softball stadiums. And then one final item from my COG Chesapeake Bay and Water Resources Policy Committee meeting, we had a really interesting discussion at great length with the executive director of DCWASA and of WSSC, and got some really interesting information on the water and sewer infrastructure in the area and the programs that have been upgrading that and what it's going to take to do the necessary upgrades to that infrastructure. It was basically not, the, the maintenance that was needed, the long-term maintenance was not done over a period of 50 or 60 years. A lot of it is really old, and some of the ways that they're coming up with to try and deal with that backlog are interesting, and again, I've got information on that that was not on the website, and I will provide that material as well. So I've got a bunch of things that you'll be getting in your mailbox that'll, that'll be in paper form sometime this week. Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I can't remember if I did this one on the last little, what I've been doing in my spare time report. So October the 27th was an action-packed day. In the morning, I helped sell, set up and sell books for the Friends of the Tacoma Park, Maryland Library Book Sale, Let No Customer Go Unscathed. And in the afternoon, I was an excellent judge at the Recreation Department's Halloween Parade, Too Many Cute Kids Men, Moms and Dads, Not An Easy Job. I actually, over these last few weeks, completed the new app tour with Erkin at my request, since, if you recall, I was too injured on September the 12th to, to do it with you all. Very eye-opening, the farmer's market at the crossroads is really quite special. I, I, I'm remiss in that I haven't been there before, and I will go back.
Actually- Not till the spring.
Huh? But not till the spring, right, right, correct. It's, it's not open any longer until the spring. I met with Pinecrest Citizens Association on their quarterly meeting and tried to talk them into having their next meeting at the Mid-Atlantic Seafood, since it's right in their area. I also met with them and the architect and owner of a new business going in on New Hampshire Avenue to discuss the structure and its environmental impact on the area, and, and when it's going to be built and what it's going to do to parking and all of those wonderful things that, that make everything such, such a wonderful and exciting time around here. I attended the Maryland Municipal League Convention Meeting, and I, you know, much to everyone's surprise, am on the social committee where I'm a team captain, where I'm a team captain for the, the new mini golf tournament, which I'm expecting all of you to, to be in on the Sunday before the actual beginning of the, of the event. It should be a lot of fun. We're going to hopefully take over a miniature golf course down at Ocean City, and those of us who don't, don't play other golf can play miniature golf. I worked, went with some residents, walked from Elm to Second Avenue with Darrell Braithwaite and several, lots of residents to see the condition of their sidewalks. There are people in the city who want new sidewalks. Darrell is working on trying to get these repaired and probably going, you know, it won't happen until 2013, but using ADA, the sidewalks are in such hideous repair, it, they're not even close to any kind of an ADA requirement, they're far, far off. I had the opportunity to meet with Chief Goldberg about recent car and home burglaries along our wonderful Eastern New Hampshire Avenue corridor. He said, lock your houses and lock your cars and don't leave things that are stealable in the vehicles, but I think everyone's heard that before. I had a great opportunity to meet with the Volunteer Fire Department Board of Directors, mostly about the ladder truck. The city staff is working on some archives and- The city staff is working on some archives and minutes from the meeting in May of 2008, where Chief Bowers promised that we'd have the truck back when the, the new firehouse was built. So we've got a little bit of, a little bit of fire there, pun intended. We're also working on a plan that, and we want to wait until, it's our hold card to see, so we can get some citizens involved in discussing this issue. The other thing, they're going to begin their holiday tree sale on December the 1st in the city lot. So if you haven't purchased or don't know where to go get a holiday tree, go to the city lot after December the 1st. I had the pleasure of meeting with a group of Jefferson Avenue residents, and you all met with them tonight, too, about the signs at Ritchie and redistricting, and a myriad of other things, a whole full page of interesting bits of information. And I had the opportunity during this last three or four weeks of meeting with many residents out in the field about their comments, and I don't want to call them complaints, but just things that they have had, things that were wrong with their area, chatting with them, and trying to see if we can get some of those worked out with the proper city department. So it's been a fun and action-packed few weeks.
Anybody else?
Who?
Seeing none? I think we've finished our business for the evening.
So moved.
You've moved that we finish our business for the evening? Okay, we're adjourned.